Good evening and welcome to the Tewksbury Board of Select meeting on June 4th, 2024. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Before we begin, I'd like to have everybody join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, for our Recording Secretary, Mr. Krappman is running late and Ms. Miller, I mean Ms. Wellman will be joining us around 7:30, I think she said. Was that what time she said? And she's going to be joining virtually. First item on tonight's agenda is Arinap Sellers LLC Farmers Market Liquor License. Is there anyone here for that? Could you introduce yourself for the record, please?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Alexandra Louder, Community and Economic Development Planner, here before you this evening for both the Arinap Sellers and then the next item as well, Bliss Point Meterie. They are looking to have temporary licenses dedicated specifically to the market season. They alternate weeks, every other week for the 16-week season, and there is no onsite consumption, no, you know, no tip certified necessary. They're just selling their products.
Are they selling their products as bottles?
Correct.
Are they sampling anything?
There are samples in about Robitussin-sized cups, maybe a centimeter, like a fingernail, but it's not any actual, there's no actual onsite consumption.
Okay, this is a renewal of a license that was done in the past, correct?
More or less, yeah, because they're not, they don't operate in Tewksbury permanently, but they do have to come every year because it is technically a separate event.
I have no issues with it. I'm going to turn it over to the board. Mr. Mack, do you have any questions?
I have no questions.
Mr. Ryder?
I have no questions, Mr. Chair.
And you answered the question that I had asked, and they will ask for IDs, I assume.
Correct.
You know?
Yes.
I shouldn't assume anything. With that being said, what is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, motion to approve the temporary liquor license, or sorry, special one-day licenses for the dates of Thursday, June 6th through September 26th, 2024, for Arinap Sellers.
Second.
And we have a motion made by Mr. Mackey, second, and by Mr. Ryder. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And Chair votes aye as well. We don't have to do a roll call since there's only three of us as of now. Okay, next up is the Bliss Point Meterie. And Ms. Louder, again, same scenario?
Yes, sir.
Same cup?
Exactly, yep, same small medicine size, about a fingernail of sampling the ID before those samples, no otherwise onsite consumption, and they're just selling their bottles, as bottled.
And they've done this before?
Yeah, this is their third season with us, actually.
Okay, good, good, yeah. Any questions from any board members?
None.
Harry Nun, what is the pleasure of the board?
Make a motion, Mr. Chair, to approve the one-day special alcohol license, dates Thursday, June 6th through September 26th, 2024.
For Farmers Market Liquor?
Correct.
Okay, or Bliss Point Meterie, I should say. Grab a second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion made by Mr. Ryder, second by Mr. Mackey. All those in favor sign them by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I hope you folks join us this season.
Thank you.
What's next? All right, next on the agenda is residents. I see an overwhelming crowd here, so I'm assuming that nobody's here to speak. Next is new business, donations to the Senior Center. Mr. Montori.
We have, sorry, we have received a donation in the amount of $250 from the Garden Club, and one from Donabelle in the amount of $140 to the Senior Center, and a $100 cash donation from Christian Panasuk, and asked the board to approve the donations, and we will put them in the Senior Center account.
All right, any questions from the board in regards to the donations? Harry Nun, what is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to accept the three donations with gratitude.
Second. Okay, motion by Mr. Mackey, second by Mr. Ryder. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. Mr. Montori, could you make sure we send a letter from the board to each of them? They're thanking for them for their donations. Okay. Next is donation to the public library.
Mr. Chairman, this is a donation from the estate of Linda L. O'Toole to the library in the amount of $5,000. I'd ask that the board accept the donation, and we will put it into a donation fund for the library to be used for adult programs and artistic performances.
Okay, any questions from the board?
None.
No questions from the board. And they'll be used to artistic, when they say artistic performance, do they also mean there's summer concerts they have, too?
Could be that.
Okay, I'm just asking, just for reference. Okay, what is the pleasure of the board?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chair, to accept the donation of $5,000 from the beneficiary of Linda L. O'Toole to the library.
Second with gratitude.
Okay, I have a motion made by Mr. Ryder to accept the donation, and a second by Mr. Mackey. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And Chair votes aye as well. A note for the secretary that Mr. Krappman has arrived, and that was a vote would be 4-2-0. Next on the agenda is the local historic district study committee dissolved. Mr. Montori.
The board has minutes from the local historic district study committee, at which they made a motion to dissolve the committee. Their work is complete. It's just dissolving the committee, and they've finished everything they needed to.
Okay. Any questions from the board? What is the pleasure of the board?
I will make a motion to approve the dissolution of the historic, local historic district study committee.
We have a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion made by Mr. Ryder, second by Mr. Mackey. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. That's unanimous, 4-0. Okay, board committee appointments, or board and committee reappointments, I should say. If, you can indulge me for a minute, gentlemen. Instead of going through each one of these individually, I am going to ask board members if they have read the reappointment list, and if they have a problem with anybody that's to be reappointed, let me know, because I would rather take it as a whole versus individually, to save some time. Any questions from the board? So everybody's happy with the reappointments? Okay, for the reappointments, 2024 Committee Commission reappointments. For all listed on your page, could I have a motion to approve the reappointments?
So moved.
We have a motion being by Mr. Mackey.
Second.
Second by Mr. Ryder. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And Chair votes aye as well. They're all reappointed, and I think there is, like, 40 of them. All right, next on the agenda, we have...
Mr. Chair, just for clarification, when this is put into record, Mr. Montori, will the names in each one be put into the record?
I would just, yeah, we'll put this into the record.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Is town council reappointment? Any questions from the board? Any questions on town council reappointment, Mr. Krappman?
I don't have any.
Okay, what is the pleasure of the board?
Motion to reappoint town council. I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion made by Mr. Mackey, second by Mr. Krappman. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. Town council is reappointed.
Mr. Chairman, if I can just go back to the previous appointments, that list has some individuals listed that are not board appointments, so the reappointments would only be for those under the board's jurisdiction.
Right.
So for instance, the finance committee is made, the appointing authority is the chair of the selectmen, chair of the fincom, and the moderator. So it would only be for those who are under the board's jurisdiction.
And that would be, which ones?
So conservation.
I don't have that on my, okay, conservation, all right.
Yep, so council on aging, economic development, historic commission, cultural council, open space and recreation commission, plant committee, beautification committee, diversity equity, inclusion advisory committee, and zoning board of appeals.
Okay. All right, moving on, just board and committee applications. Everybody has the updated version. Mr. Krappman, did you get the updated version? As I said, this is a discussion, and I just want to know how the board wants to proceed. I mean, we can make the appointments of the select board designees and the school committee designees, but the residents at large, I think we have to plan some type of interview system, because there are three seats and there's seven applicants, and I think we owe it to them to give them at least a chance to speak. So with that being said, Mr. Montori, can we go ahead and appoint the select board designees tonight, as well as the school committee and the advisory members?
Yes, and then you can set up interviews for the remaining.
Okay, so any questions on these appointees or applicants, whichever under? If there are no questions, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve Mr. Ryder and Mr. Mackey as the board of selectmen designate.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion made by Mr. Ryder, second by Mr. Mackey. Congratulations, gentlemen, you have another thing to do.
You.
Okay. Tewksbury School Committee, we have Bridget Garabidi and Rich Russo.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Ryder, second by Mr. Mackey. All those in favor sign them by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. That's a 4-0 vote. That's unanimous. Again, we're down to, we don't have anything for K, grades K through 4. I talked to the school committee chairman, and they're trying to reach out to parents to see who they can get. The same goes for grade 5 through 12. The resident lodge, when would we like to schedule the interviews? Anybody have any preferences?
Make a recommendation. We do it maybe prior to our next, if it works for everyone, prior to our next meeting, or I'm open to suggestions.
Anybody else?
We're all here, so if we could make it at 6, that way there's 7. If we could give 10 to 15 minutes each one, 10 minutes each one to speak.
Yeah.
It may be worth considering splitting them up. I know historically we've done like four, sometimes five, because you say 10 minutes, but then between candidates and all that.
Makes sense, yeah. Valuable point.
Okay, so we're going to do it before the June 25th meeting? We'll take the first four, and then we'll take the last three at the next meeting?
Sounds good.
Which is in July, and I don't know what the date in July is.
It's the 2nd, 14th, I want to say.
I only have one minute.
I will not, I will not be at that second meeting, Mr. Chair. I'll be away on vacation, so.
The next meeting is the 16th.
16th, okay.
In July.
Okay, so we'll schedule the first four for the 25th of June, and the last three for the 16th of July. Everybody good with that?
Sounds good.
Okay, I don't think we have to make a motion or anything like that. Now, the advisory members, Mr. Montori, do we have to appoint you? Do we have to approve the...
No, you already approved the mission statement, and the mission statement listed the positions on.
All right, now we're down to economic development committee. It's a total of five positions. We have one applicant. Can we just approve him tonight? I don't think we're going to need an interview. We have one volunteer, so we might as well just take him. Any questions?
None.
All right, what is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, motion to appoint Anthony Luverde to the economic development committee.
Second.
And we have a motion made by Mr. Mackey, second by Mr. Ryder. All those in favor signify to appoint Anthony Luverde to the economic development committee. All those in favor sign by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. All right, there we go. That's the citizens, goes with this one. I just got to find what I do with my agenda here. Okay, we did the reappoints, we did the discussion on the committee applications. Okay, now we're at the discussion on the North Street and Trahan Elementary School. Mr. Montori.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So we are, we have gone out twice with an RFP on the Trahan Elementary School, and we had no interest in its reuse. We now have the care and custody of the North Street Elementary School under the board of selectmen, and I just wanted to have the board discuss any thoughts on how they want to move forward with both schools or each school individually. Do we want to go back out with another RFP on the Trahan and really focus in on affordable housing? Do we want to have a, one of our on-call engineering firms design specifications to demolish both schools? Just want to get a feel for what the board's interested in doing. Is we could hold off? Just wanted to get some thoughts on moving forward. We have two vacant schools, and keeping them going, you know, for a long period of time may not be the best idea, as if they're not going to be used.
Yeah, well, we had the RFP, we did the best we could with that, and unfortunately it didn't, it fell through us. Didn't come to fruition.
Right. The RFP, and this is to consider if you want to go back out, the RFP was very general, because at the time, Boston Hockey Academy was interested in the schools, so we kept it very general. If we did it again, and the board is interested in doing it again, I would really make it specific for affordable housing reuse, and we could add in there that the selectmen would be interested in possibly using the trust fund to assist with, whether it's demolition or reuse of funding, help fund the reuse, reuse of the building. Because we did look at the trust fund, and the trust fund could be used to take the building down, as long as the board reused the land for affordable housing. So that's an option for the board to consider.
Okay. Board members, Mr. Ryder?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, through you to Mr. Montori. I know there's been a lot of discussion on this. I've had some discussions as well. Affordable housing, senior housing, could we put out an RFP that, to look at potentially reusing the existing building for affordable housing slash or senior housing, and then use the trust fund for that? Obviously, bringing somebody on board would be cost-effective for the town, but I think, again, as I've stated, we have close to $6 million sitting in that account, and I think it's, it's there to be used and bring that forward, and I think that that location would fit well. I do believe there is part of that, that there was discussion of keeping the playground, that play space. I know that was, is fairly new, you know, within the last seven to 10 years, so just make sure that that's carved out in that.
Yep. The RFP that we originally did, did have that carved out, and we could absolutely update the RFP to be very specific towards affordable housing. If you, if the board wants a preference to senior housing, we can add that in there. We can really focus the RFP in that people will feel more comfortable submitting an RFP, knowing that this is what you want us to do. It was very general last time, because we thought we had someone very interested in it, so we can absolutely do that. We already started talking internally about that. We can move that and turn that around within a couple of weeks and get it out the door, give the board something to look at within the next 30 to 45 days.
Yep.
Mr. Mackey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wholeheartedly agree on putting in some affordable housing, specifically if we can get senior housing in there. I know there were discussions, I don't know, a year and a half ago, about putting like a small number of units, like 12 units in there, and essentially reserving like 60, 70% of the lot for park, keeping park space there, and due to the concerns of the residents in that area, making sure we're not putting in any high-density housing. So a small number of units along the back of the lot, and then keeping it mostly open. Can we look at putting out the RFP with the contingent of using that trust fund to take down the building if we have somebody that's interested? That we're not...
We put that in as an option, and we put it in as an option to keep the building.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you both.
Yeah, I think that's going to be a, if somebody can reuse it, great, but I think that's probably been a deterrent on the current RFP, is taking down that building with unknown material concerns and mitigations that would be required. So I think if there is a stipulation that the town would assist or full-sail take that down, then that would be a boon. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Mr. Krappman?
Well, for the Trahan, I agree. I sat on that committee when we were talking about the reuse committee, and there was a lot of discussion of what was going on. And, you know, when you talk to a lot of people, you know, the obvious answer is, we don't want something that's going to be high-density, cause more problems in our community. It's an area where we just did a lot of reconstruction to the intersections to move traffic along there, and they don't want to see something go in there, a four or five-story apartment building that's going to create a problem. But with that said, affordable senior housing, I think we could put an RFP out there. I think that's something that the residents would be happy with. It would not create a lot of traffic that would be going in and out of there. There's usually one or two vehicles max, there's something like that when you're doing. I've sat on a community development board for over 30-something years. I have experience doing these type of things. And to Mr. Mackey's point about taking it down, that's a great option, but I'd like to hear them tell us, because one of the things is, if they reuse portions of the building, they get historic tax credits by maintaining part of the building. They may want us to, as part of that, maybe we would gutter it out, take out, you know, the hazardous materials and those type of things, but a lot of people will want to keep the shell of it, because they get tax credits, because it's an older building, and they can sell those off to make it more affordable. And with that said, I've done it many times, where you can put something in there, and maybe partnering with, there's been a lot of schools that I've worked on in the past, where we took old elementary schools, other things like that, and we've taken like the cafeteria area, and we've partnered with like Mash General or something like that, where they've made a commercial part of portion of it, and they have like something where it would be adult daycare for the community. So if you have seniors, people that have, you know, dementia or Alzheimer's, things of those things, you have a place where you can drop them off, have those kind of services. So maybe partnering with Circle Health, the Whole Five, or Leahy, or whoever in the community, to see if that would be something that we could work on while maintaining it. I mean, a lot of, when you build something like that, you do not need a ton of parking. That place already has a ton of parking. You'd be able to take the whole backfields, maybe put, you know, a garden in there, pickleball courts, some things you could add, a lot of services for the community, because it is such a large parcel, and still, you know, put in, you know, a number of units. I mean, there's a certain number that a developer will look at that makes it feasible for them to create something, to get the grants that they need. So I wouldn't want to limit it, you know, maybe they have to put something on there that they get, like, you know, 20-something units or 25, I'm not really sure what the number is, but they will need a, meet a certain number. But remember, we have a 15- to 20-year wait for senior housing in this community. So if we filled up 15, 20 units, they'd all be taken in very quickly. And that's not going to be something that the residents, I think, will be upset about, and it's not going to cause a great traffic concern. So for that parcel, I think that's great. With the North Street School, I've had conversations with a couple of groups, we're talking to them at the Memorial Day Parade, we're talking with Tewksbury Youth Football. They are still using the North Street School. They do not have an area that they've been able to, they have a lot of kids that are using the auditorium and the cafeteria area, because they have mats and the ceilings are higher. So right now, they're still using it. There's been some discussions working with the new center school, but I have had conversations with them as well, to see if they could coexist over there, and it really comes down to time. There's not a lot of time available for all the kids and all the programs that are running. We had them send a list over to us, which I shared with the town manager, and said, can you please try to coordinate this with the school department to see if they could work this out, to see if, if there's a way to fit them into the existing schools if we took down the North Street. Right now, it doesn't appear to be. It appears that there's a need for that North Street School, for some of the programs they're running. The rush to take it down, I wouldn't want to leave something that's vacant just sitting there, but the fact that the community is still using it, and there's quite a number of kids in this community that are still using it, and there's a need, I would, I would lean toward leaving, keeping it, trying to do something with it, and letting them using while they can. And then if we do something, if we focus on the Trahan for redeveloping and leaving that for recreational use for the community for now, I think that would be our best bet. That's my thought process on it.
Mr. Chair, if I may follow up on that? Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. To follow up on what Mr. Krappman stated, I think in the short term, obviously, you know, I understand, have been involved in youth activities at the high schools for, you know, 12, 15 years. I understand it's, time is a premium to get into the gyms. I think we should also look at potential CPA funds to explore a design, a proper use of the North Street if we're going to go with Trahan for affordable housing, senior housing. Use some funds out of CPA funds to bring a firm in. Look at the site, give us some ideas that we could present in the long term that, for recreation use, whether passive park, some sport courts, or something along those lines. In the meantime, trying to figure out, let the school, let the youth groups use it, and then eventually transition once we have that plan in place. But I think concentrating on the Trahan would be a priority. We have the funding, we have a funding mechanism for that with the Affordable Housing Trust, and then potentially November, bringing something to town meeting to get some funds out of the CPA for exploration of that site for recreation use. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. I actually agree with the RFP for the Trahan School, but my only question is, this would be for you, Mr. Montori. If we partner with somebody, they can, and we put affordable housing on there, we use our trust money, they use some of their money, this just doesn't go, now it's, anybody can apply for residency there, not just residency to Tewksbury.
Correct. No matter how you do it, you can't restrict it to residents.
Even if we just use our trust funds?
Even, yeah, it's, if you want it to count towards your, your housing subsidy inventory.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, to add to that, there is, if we build something and we were able to do that, there is a percentage, which I think is at least like 20% or something like that. is at least like 20% or something like that, that is something that is residents driven first. And if we're focused on, like I said, I've been doing this many years. If you tend to build senior housing, senior housing, seniors do not want to travel to many different areas. They tend to want to stay in the areas that they're focused on. So yes, maybe we get some people from Wilmington or Bill Ricker or, you know, budding areas, but, you know, when you get into your senior years, you're not looking to up and start over in some place where you don't know anybody. So they tend to usually apply to the areas that they're familiar with. That's why we have a 15, 20 year late. If we had residents that was willing to go to Lynn and Salem and things, they, there would be probably opportunities, but they're not. They want to stay in this area. So that's where you get that. So if you had enough people that were applying to be on that, you'd have the applicants. Yes, they can accept people from other places, but it's going to be the qualified people and most of the applications I'm expecting will be from this surrounding area, especially if you're talking about building senior housing.
I'll check on the exact requirements and I'll, because they've, they've changed even the way the housing authority does it. Yeah.
And I would like to see Tewksbury residents. And in regards to the North Street School, I agree with Mr. Ryder and Mr. Krabman on you are going to meet with the people who are using the school now and get a small clarification of what they intend to do.
Yeah, I plan to have a call with the youth chairing and Dave Libby to talk about the needs that they have and how we can meet them at the Center Elementary School and try to work something out.
And the other thing in regards to Mr. Ryder's question on the CPA funding, as soon as we use that CPA funding for recreation, does it have to remain that forever?
I can check that. I can double check that.
Yeah, because that concerns me. I, I don't want to throw good money after bad, but I also, if we're going to throw money at it and it's going to work, I want to make sure that we have other resources down the line, just in case we do need a new school, we have the property. So I want to make sure we do the CPA funds, what they were intended to do. And that's all I have. Any other questions from board members?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, through you to the town manager, how much do we currently have in the CPA?
It depends which fund.
The recreation bucket in particular.
Hold on for one second.
Thank you. And the impetus behind that question is, yeah, if people are using the building, we should maximize that as long as we can. But if we're going to be talking about expanding or building new facilities, I think we should focus on Livingston Street and potentially getting more state land, land from the state in that area and kind of expanding that already hub that we have for recreation and focusing down there, you know, bathrooms, maybe an additional building, expanding that out as much as we can too, as opposed to kind of starting somewhere else, especially as you said, with the long-term planning school committee that we talked about tonight. There's a rumblings of a new school being needed sometime.
Rumblings, just rumblings.
Not too far away, so.
So right now, so right now we have in the Open Space and Recreation Fund, $37,487, but that will, that money will bump up because we're getting our, we'll be getting another distribution from the state as well as next year's surcharge revenue, so that'll increase. But there's the Undesignated Fund, which can be used for anything that has a little over $2.7 million in it, which can be used. And part of the plan is to use that for any renovations to the Ella Fleming School. So, and again, with the surcharge and FY '25 to state match, and these numbers were as of beginning of April, whatever money is commenced April, so those will all bump up.
So the unrestricted funds, which we're going to be getting into next on the housing discussion, you could use that for affordable housing as well, correct?
You could, but we do have a CPA Reserve Housing Reserve Fund that has $1,043,168 in it, and that's in addition to the 5.8 that we have in the Affordable Housing Trust.
So we have a little over $7 million?
Yes.
And now that we're, anybody else have any more comments on the Trahan or the North Street School? If there's none, we'll move on to the next discussion. That's the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and that's why I asked this question. And just for clarification, Mr. Montori, the $5.8 million, who controls those funds?
The Select, the Select Board does.
Okay. Who controls the $1.4 million in the CPA?
It's $1,043,000, that's Town Meeting.
Town Meeting. And the 2.7 in?
Undesignated, anything with CPA is Town Meeting.
Okay.
Currently, just Mr. Chairman, the housing, the housing, Affordable Housing Trust Fund has 5.8 million, but the board did approve 450 to Soldieron, so we have a little under 4, probably a little over 5.3 million.
And I just wanted that for clarification on who controls the funds and how we can use them. I wanted to bring this Affordable Housing Trust thing up because I want to know how we want to proceed with it. Do you want to just sit there and let it sit in the bank? Do we want to do something progressive? You don't have to spend the $5.3 million all at once. Do we want to meet with the planning board, just the planning board? We can bring other boards on in the future if need be, but I think the planning board should be involved in it to see which direction we want to go and just throw out ideas. We're not going to subsidize our way out of this. We're not builders. We have to figure out a way, who do we team up with to get the Affordable Housing at the Trahan or some other location? So the reason I put this on the agenda was I want to know what the board favors. Let's start with Mr. Krabman.
Yeah, we sat last year and we came up with a list of priorities and out of those list of priorities, housing was one of them. And we talked about this. We've been criticized in the past for having town property and not taking advantage of it and using it for something that could create housing in our community. We now have two vacant schools. We don't have to pay to buy land. Having somebody come in and trying to really find a way to, that would build something without causing problems in the community, I think is something that we should focus on. I love the fact of having the plan board come in and get their perspective on it because they listen to the developers. They have all these meetings. They know who's done it, who's in the past, who's willing to come in here. But, you know, we need to find somebody that's willing to bring in their expertise, find out what's the roadblocks that's in our way. I sat down with the town manager and members of the Housing Authority not too long ago to get their perspective on why can't we get more things? And the state is just not subsidizing more. They're willing to take, to, to take care of what we have existing housing, but their, their attitude is that they're not going to finance any more additional housing. So the Housing Authority is kind of locked and they have their hands tied. And so even if we went to build something, the state's not going to take it over and make it part of the Housing Authority. So we would need a developer that would be coming in, that would be able to build something, bring in a maintenance company, bring in something, a management team that could still keep it affordable, but we are not, like I said, we are not, we're not landlords. But we have control of the property where we could, you know, we would lease that property, but it still maintains property of the town of Tewksbury. And we could put some, an RFP out there that says specifically what we're looking for. You know, we have a waitlist, we know what we have, we know what the town is looking for, and I think we should sit down and do the best we can. You're not going to get a lot of people that will bid on certain developments because it's too small for them, plain and simple. They're going to look at something, if somebody's going to go out and bid on a lot of things, you're going to get the Lowell, you're going to get the Boston's, you're going to get the Summerville Almanzes, where they're looking to build 50, 60, 70, 100 unit developments because that's where the money is. And, you know, and that's on the small end. No one will even touch something in a city that's really under 75 units. So for us to bring something in that's maybe 25 units on a thing and still be able to maintain open space, we're really going to have to dig in and do some research and try to bring somebody in that's willing to listen to us and create something that's good for our community. And I think we have the ability to do that. May take us some time, but we're not honestly in a rush to do it. I mean, the people who are waiting for housing are in a rush, but we do not, we're not up against something that we have to take down that school, we have to do this, we have to do that. The buildings are locked up, we know what's there, we're keeping an eye on them and, like I said, I'd like to see something done with them. I don't want to see them left vacant for, you know, a decade. I want to see something done with them. But like I said, I think we have some time to do some well, some good planning and make a nice project for the community.
That's the reason I brought it up because I think you have five members of this board, five members, 10 minds are better than And that's why I want to know how you want to proceed. Mr. Mackey, I'll leave it up to you as for now.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So actually, question through you to the town manager. If we were to, let's say, use this $5.3 million and put out an RFP, because while we are not builders, we put out RFPs for buildings all the time, new fire, new DPW, if we were to get units built with this $5.3 million, can we put them under the Housing Authority?
You could.
You could.
It's just the concern there is the Housing Authority taking on more assets to maintain without funding from the Commonwealth is different, is difficult.
Okay, but that's at least part of a discussion that we can further have. I would not want to put all of our Affordable Housing Trust, while I'm very much in favor of using this money as opposed to letting it sit there. I would not want to use all this money to have a private organization then have control of those units. That doesn't sit well with me. If it were to go into our housing, under our control, the town's control, I think that's far more acceptable. But I also don't want to be discouraged by saying we're not builders. We're, we're not, but we build things all the time through the RFP process. Bring in architects, we do a design and we get things built. So I don't think this should be treated any differently. And I do just want to clarify, while I agree with what Mr. Krabman said, more than 20 units or high density, I don't think should be considered. We just talked about that previously when we were talking about the schools. I don't think we should be considering more than like 20 units on the Trahan. Like that needs to be a very not dense. So I don't, to me, it's not a boon if it attracts additional partners because we allow them higher density. I think we need to be very strict on how many units we allow there and I am very interested to hear what the planning board has to say.
Mr. Ryder. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I will echo some of my fellow board members, you know, having dealt with many projects in my 30 years of municipal government. I agree, we're not builders. I put projects out all the time, but when we're paying prevailing wage under a municipal, it's just not cost effective. And that's why we have to partner and really that's the, the mechanism for municipalities today is to partner with the best firm, as Mr. Krabman stated, getting the best firm for that site. You know, and it's going to take some time. We'll find somebody, but putting out, getting some ideas of what we can do on the site through the RFP process and part of that is going to work with the neighbors. You know, they don't want to see it just get run down and stay vacant, but yet they also don't want to see a five story high rise. But there's going to be some happy medium. So something has to go there at some point. And I agree, we want, we want to use that site and get the most benefit for the community. And I think that is, in my opinion, would be senior housing. You know, if we can get, you know, 10 Tewksbury residents and two from Wilmington and one from Lowell and two from Bill Ricker and maybe one from North Andover, I'm okay with that because that's 10 from Tewksbury. That's going to be the mechanism for us. So willing to put the work in, I just think we need to get some ideas and move forward. We have the funding and who knows what's going to come out for housing grants, but again, we need to be aggressive and see what our options are.
Yeah, that's why I wanted to bring it up because I know my predecessor had a meeting, well, it really wasn't a meeting, it was more of a presentation. Great presentation, we had some ideas out of it, but we didn't get anything done. We got to get something done this time. So with that being said, when would you like to meet with the planning board or send them an invitation? I mean, we could have this as a separate meeting, does not have to be during the board's litigant or the planning board meeting. We can do it on a Thursday night. Anybody have any ideas of availability or? We could have Mr. Montori send out the invite to the board, to the planning board to find out what days they're available and I can work around any of those dates.
That was going to be my suggestion, Mr. Chair, that's send something to the chair of the planning board, see if there's some availability coming in the next, you know, month or whatever near future to see if there's availability for them to meet with us and, and then try to see if that works with us and schedule something. We've met with them in the past. I think, I like the fact of just having that as the agenda. We tend to get confused. The last time we had them in, there was a presentation from a developer and it honestly overwhelmed the whole meeting. We didn't get anything done that we wanted to talk about locally. We ended up talking about statewide and it was very, as far as I'm concerned, it was unproductive. I'd rather than listen to what we have plans on our location and what we want in our community rather than listening to state agency come in and tell us what they, what they would like to see.
Well, even if we meet and we divide into groups, okay, your action plan is to look into this, your group is looking into that. So we have some type of plan moving forward. So Mr. Montori, if you could do that?
Sure.
And let us know when their availability is. Again, it could be off, not a night that we have a meeting because it's just, ramble on too long, put it that way.
Yep, I can, I'll just take care of that tomorrow.
Any other questions? Okay, next on the agenda is Chamber of Commerce Open House. And I'm assuming that's you, Mr. Krabman.
Yeah, I'm actually not the one who's organizing it. My, my Vice President of the Chamber is coordinating with Alex Lauder and they're doing some things for economic development. They're doing one, an open house in Wilmington and they decided that they should actually do an open house in Tewksbury. So they're working together and they want to just promote local businesses and having an open house on the town center and they sent a request asking if we'd do so and I told them I'd bring it in front of the board to see if the board would allow the use of Town Hall for them to do some local economic development and obviously invite the economic development chairs to come to it and take part of it if you're available.
So just for the Town Hall or Town Common?
It would be, I think it's going to be the Town Common. I didn't know if they were going to do something, I think it was, was it vote? I think it was, I think there was conversation about doing something indoor and out, but I'm not really positive. Like I said, I'm not coordinating it. It was something that was being done by, you know, my Vice President and Alex planning it.
Well, I have a problem with it, is are the residents inviting to come?
It's open to everybody. It's open to, it's an open house to talk about businesses and things like that that's going on.
Yeah, they're looking for approval for the common and if they need any access here, I can work that out, but they need the board approval to use the common.
Please somebody to lock the door and unlock the door.
I'm going to be here.
Take care of them.
Long story. Long story.
I will be here, Alex will be here. I think Eric just said he'd be here, so we'll just try to.
All right. I don't have a problem with that. Do we need a motion on this thing?
Yes.
Do we need to approve the use of Town Hall before the Chamber of Commerce Open House?
Friendly amendment, that's the Town Common, right?
Town, yep, on July 26th.
There's a time that's in there somewhere.
Noon. The event is noon on Friday, July 26th, 2024.
Okay, but motion made by Mr. Reider. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Mackey. All those in favor, somebody saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well, that's unanimous, four to zero. Okay, next on the agenda is town manager search. No, actually, yeah, town manager search.
So I provided the board, obviously, with my notification of retirement. I put a date of October 2nd, but I just put a date for now. I'll stay until you find a replacement. But the process should start, and the board needs to discuss how they want to approach it. I provided a draft of, I provided a job description and a draft ad of the board, for the board to review, as well as the process that the charter outlines. The charter is very specific. The board does need to appoint a search committee. But the board just needs to decide if they want the search committee to handle the search and, you know, with the help of our Human Resource Department, as was done in the past, or does the board want to undertake a consultant to help with the search as other communities have done. So that's really, really the discussion. And I just wanted to get, you know, get the ball rolling one way or another. I think the board should at least advertise for any interested residents who want to be on the search committee. We can get that advertised right away and have names back in front of the board for appointment at the next meeting. The way it's structured in the charter is each member would pick a, pick an individual to be on the committee. If the board wants to hire a search firm, and they authorize me to start the process to get pricing and proposals, I can start that tomorrow. If the board wants to do a combination, if the board wants to advertise the position and get a search firm, there's all types of things the board can do to start the process. So just want to get an understanding of how you want to move.
Okay, thank you for that. Any comments from the board?
Yes, Mr. Chair. This is taking place, first, I don't want you to leave. But, but, you know, you've many years of service, Richard, I really appreciate it. And once again, you're helping us, you know, get onto that next stage and bringing somebody in, and I really appreciate your assistance of putting us in the right direction. I looked into, there's been many communities around here, and actually, there was just a notification that the Drakehead Town Managers just put in their resignation as well. So we're going to be competing with groups to try to get people in this. It just happened in Wilmington, I think it was in North Andover and, a lot of communities have been doing search committees. I did reach out to a friend of mine in Wilmington who was a previous selectman and was on the search committee in Wilmington, just to get a feel of what they did and how they did it. You know, my take on it from what I could read from the other communities, almost all of them hired like a firm or somebody to bring in the best applicants, to go out and search and find the best people, that's what they do. They go out and they'll find the most qualified people, and they're able to weed out, you know, who and what of the, of like, you know, if you have someone that has to have masters in this or whatever it is, you're going to get a lot of applications in there. And I think it's easier for them to go through and try to kind of break it down to, like, give us a, you know, give us three or four of the top applicants and what you've gone through and why, and get their expertise on doing it. And who's the most qualified applicants in trying to find us the most qualified applicants? It's not easy. So I think having a firm come in, I think is very beneficial to us. We want to make sure that we have somebody with the expertise to run a town, and I think that's the best way to go forward. The search committee, we can have that discussion to figure out, you know, how we're going to go about that by our bylaws, but I think having that part of a professional firm would be very beneficial to us.
Mr. Mackey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to the town managers, quick question. So just to clarify for those residents watching online, having a firm does not replace the search committee that's required by our charter.
Correct. The search committee would work with the, with the firm. And between the search committee and the firm, they would narrow it down to three candidates to present to the Board of Selectmen, and the process would be confidential.
Now, would this, would the select board be retaining this firm or would the search committee be retaining this firm? Because my, oh, sorry, I lost that question.
The board, the board would hire the firm.
My concern with that is if we're appointing the search committee as our charter requires, I think they should have the ball on it, and they come back to us with those three names as required. I think we should be able to authorize a committee, I mean, a consultant, if that's what the committee chooses to do. But our charter was written a specific way for a reason, and I don't think we should be reaching into that. I think we should allow the committee, we can give them the option, we can approve that this is an option that they have should they choose to exercise it, but I don't think that we should be making that decision. That being said, I think we want to get this process moving quickly. I think everyone's in agreement on that. So whatever we can do to expedite this process and get the ball rolling, I think is going to be beneficial for us. So that's my two cents. Thank you.
Mr. Reider.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I understand the charter states that we need to have a search committee, which I understand, I think there's some validity in, but at the end of the day, it's the responsibility of this board to appoint the best candidate for the next town manager. And I think it's in the best interest for us to pick the best firm. I do not want to rely on a committee to pick the firm. I think it's our responsibility to hire the town administrative town manager, and I think it's our responsibility, this board's responsibility, to hire the firm to work with the committee. You know, at the end of the day, this is, this individual, the next town manager will hope to be here as long as Mr. Montori was. Again, I'll echo what Mr. Krappman said. By no means would I want to see you leave, but I completely understand and appreciate your service, and I think that we're best suited if we bring on the firm. We have Mr. Montori reach out to other firms. I've worked with some firms in the past that can go out and approach individuals out in the marketplace. And as Mr. Krappman stated, Drakehead's going to be looking, there's a couple other communities close to it that are going to be looking as well. So we are, it's going to be a competitive time, and we want to get that firm in immediately. And I think waiting for the search committee to put the firm, I think we need to go out and get the firm, bring that firm, do the interviews, and then put them in touch with, run parallel with the appointing that committee. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. I'll add my two cents now. Mr. Montori, thank you very much for your service, and thank you for staying on board and helping us get through this process.
Absolutely. Not a problem.
I agree with Mr. Krappman and Mr. Reider that we do need a professional firm out there to get the best qualified candidates we can. But to you, Mr. Montori, could we have a combination of both? The search committee and the professional committee, I mean, the professional, I'm going to say recruiter.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because you can, we'll, we'll choose the firm, and the committee will listen to what the firm has to say because it's going to be, say, five more minds that could say, I like this person, I don't like this person. And then it comes to us and we say, well, why didn't you like this person? So I think a combination of both would be more fruitful for us. And that's all I have for that. So if you could start the process of the advertising for the committee members and the cost of the recruitment firm.
So what I'll do is we'll, we'll get the advertisement out tomorrow for the committee, for the search committee, and I will solicit proposals from the firms that do this work. There's about three or four of them in the state that do it. You know, ask for those to be sent to us. I'll talk to each firm and ask how quick the turnaround would be, and then I'll keep the board members in touch of what's going on, and you can decide when you want to interview.
Okay, any more questions?
One question, Mr. Chairman. So if we are hiring the firm, that's fine, but the firm is reporting to the committee, correct?
Correct.
The search committee?
Correct, yes.
Okay, so that's, that's my biggest concern. I want to make sure we're kind of, we got that firewall up in between. Thank you.
And I see Ms. Wellman showed up.
Hi, sorry, I'm sorry, gentlemen, I have a conflict with another board meeting today in my work community. Eric, I'm sure you can appreciate these conflicts. So that meeting is happening, something else is happening right now, so I came to join this conversation, but I'll have to leave. I support the use of the search firm. I think that's critical to sharing your professionalism and indicating that we're looking for professional staff, and it also indicates to our candidates that we are a serious board. But I wanted to know what the process was for the recruitment of the search firm.
So I will, I will contact the firms that do this work. I already know who they are, I already know who the individuals are because I've worked with them in their capacity as town managers. I will get, I'll get proposals from them on how they would undertake the search and the costs for undertaking the search. And because I believe that the amount of money that this will cost will only require us to, I won't have to do a full-blown RFP process. I'll be able to contact them and get proposals. And once I get those, I will circulate them to the board. I'll try to turn this around within the next week to two weeks at most. I did actually talk to two of the firms already, so, you know, they know this is coming.
You can do an RFP process, you have to do those, I don't know if, I think that you only have to send it to firms that you're willing to change, you would be willing to work with anyway, so that's one way to get a cost savings, because there are several firms that are excellent. The common center doesn't require procurement process because they're a state agency and through a university, so that's another option to look at as well, if you have any thought about that. So I'm sure you probably have. I just hope that the board will be able to make a decision on the search firm that we use, and then appropriate response to it. I would think it probably costs around $10,000, based on the number of searches I've done recently personally prepared. So if it's appropriate for their number of great firms and they will help us, we're all very busy people, I'll show you that process. So I just wanted to put that on the record. I appreciate your diligence and apologize for my absence.
Okay, anybody else, any other board members?
One more alibi, Mr. Chairman. Are we going to open up the search committee applications?
Yes, he's going to have it tomorrow.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, so now we're on to town council invoice.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Town council invoice from May 1st through May 15th, and the amount of $5,015. I would recommend approval.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Krappman, second by Mr. Reider. We have a roll call vote, Ms. Wellman is on the tube, so. Ms. Wellman, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Krappman.
Aye.
Mr. Mackey. Mr. Reider.
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. Okay, now we're on to minutes from May 2nd and May 14th. Mr. Reider.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from May 2nd, 2024. We'll take them separately.
Do we have a second? Okay. It was one, I think it's on the next one, I have a question.
Is there any?
Okay. All those in, a roll call vote, Ms. Wellman, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Krappman.
Aye.
Mr. Reider, I mean, Mr. Mackey.
Aye.
Mr. Reider.
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. One of May 14th.
Yes, Mr. Chair, make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of May 14th, 2024. If anyone has any questions.
I have one question on, Mr. Mackey was excused from that one, and it says on, present was Mr. Holland, Mr. Krappman, and Ms. Jane Wellman, and your name is not present at that 14th meeting.
Okay.
I think, I think you might have been virtual. Yeah, Chair Holland and stated Mr. Krappman and Mr. Reider participated virtually, so it was.
No, I.
No. Chairman, if I may, the first one is, so the three that were here, I was not, I was one of the ones that was not here, so I would assume, based on the rest of them being 4-0, Mr. Krappman was late?
That's correct.
Okay.
But on the same meeting, Mr. Krappman and Mr. Reider participated virtually.
If we want to.
Present should have been, I mean, it's not a big issue, the present should have been Mr. Holland, Ms. Wellman, and virtually, Mr. Krappman and Mr. Reider.
No, I was, I was here.
No, he was here.
Mr. Chair, if we want to table the 14th, I will review these.
Yeah, why don't we?
Just let me go through those, yeah.
Okay.
I'll have Paul watch the table.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll follow up on those, and we'll bring them back at the next board meeting.
All right. With that, board member reports. What's that, that was Ms. Wellman? You still there?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you well.
Board member reports.
Oh, I think, very briefly, I just wanted to thank the board's approval previously for our product, and it was an excellent success on Sunday. Particularly, I want to thank the manager and our facility staff who were on hand and did a tremendous job supporting the after-party turnout. We had a lot of fun on the common, and we were out here by about 2:00 p.m. So it's great afternoon for everybody, and many compliments from our residents. Thank you.
Mr. Krappman.
Just one board report, the LRTA, we had a meeting last Thursday, we went over our minutes, but we also had a, we had a meeting with the, with the town. I had the Director of the LRTA come over to Tewksbury, and we had a joint meeting with the council, Jan of the Senior Center, DPW, you know, department heads in town, and we discussed providing more service to Tewksbury. So effective June 24, 2024, which we're going to put out on the website, the bus service is actually increasing. They're changing the route to add additional services down Route 38. So previously, the bus would go to, it would go down Livingston Street, take a left on East Street, come up Chandler Street, and then go continue the rest of 38. Now what we're doing is that the bus is going to go down to Livingston Street, go up to Tewksbury State Hospital, turn around in there, come back up Livingston Street, and then continue the whole length of 38. So this will provide to all the businesses that's going on. Currently, our bus route in Tewksbury is usually the third busiest in the community. So they went and they did studies on all the stops of where people were being picked up. The other end of town where, you know, where they used to go down East Street, they really, there was nobody being picked up by it at all. It just continued down there, there was nobody hopping on the bus there. But now we're going to add additional stops on 38, and we're working with our DPW to make sure where we put out this handicap accessibility. It's going to continue to go by the library, it's continuing to go by a lot of different businesses. There's a lot of businesses in town that the employees work at those locations. And one of the things I brought up to them is that right now, if somebody takes the bus in the morning, if we have young professionals that are looking to get into Boston, they're unable to take the bus and get in by nine o'clock. If the bus service starts at seven o'clock over in Gallagher Station and then travels all the way through, comes over to Tewksbury, and by the time they make their way to Wilmington Station, it's a little after eight o'clock. If you're going to catch the commuter train and you're going to get into Boston, you're not making it into Boston by nine o'clock. So I said, this, you know, if we really want to use this to promote people getting off the roadways, we have to provide additional service. So we, as we discussed with them, they're going to commence an hour earlier, and they're going to start services starting at going to start services starting at six o'clock in the morning. So now that bus service will provide to get people by the station by seven and hopefully get some people that do want to use the transit to get into Boston or wherever they may need to get to, if they're working, you know, working and want to use that to get some people off our roadways. So that's going up on the, on the town website. Mr. Montori will do that. And then also, for the month of July, we're doing Tri-Transit Month, and so the entire month of July, it's going to be riding for free. So anybody that uses the transit, we got grants to do so, to try to bring back people, riders on the LRTA, to promote them. So anybody that gets on the LRTA during the month of July, we've done it in the past, it's brought a lot of riders during the summertime, and then they tend to stay on during the fall to get used to doing it. So we're going to try to promote that as well.
Did you put that promotion also on the little bulletin board out there?
I have, yeah, I have the bulletin, I literally just got them a couple hours ago. So I'm just going to share, I got them electronically to share with you. Thank you. So I asked them to provide them to us. They had a meeting to say today to figure out, they were putting that together, but I will provide it to the board, you know, provide it to, we'll be able to get it up on the website. But all the, when we sat and we met with all the department heads, the Senior Center, the Department of Public Works, the, everybody that, all the people that were stakeholders in this, all agreed that this would be a good idea. So I just wanted to get the input of everybody prior to making any changes. And we voted on it internally and everybody liked it.
Mr. Mackey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to take a moment to thank everybody that came out for the Memorial Day Ceremony. Also wanted to take a moment to thank Lisa Downey, our Veterans Agent, and Tuxbury VFW Post 8164 for not only their work on the event, but for their efforts in putting up and taking down the flag display we had out front. And then also to Mr. and Mrs. Ryder for all their work on the parade. So I know there was quite a, quite a bit of corral that went on to happen, so thank you for that.
Yes, it was.
And then, I don't want to do it again.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Mr. Ryder.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I had a brief meeting with Mr. Montori, as I stated, about working on the Economic Development Committee. Ms. Lauder is going to reach out to and send an email to everyone, and we're going to get a meeting together and put together a survey and get that ball rolling, see if we can create, as we appointed a new member tonight, create some more interest and get that going along with what the chamber is doing, a combination of that, to see if we can get that spurred. But that's all I have for committee. But if, when, when done, I just do have one more thing I would like to mention. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to follow up. A resident reached out to me about the YMCA. I want to thank Mr. Montori. That schedule went out, and from one of the residents who were very active in bringing this movement to Tuxbury, she said that she'd been receiving a lot of calls and just waiting. So maybe at the next meeting, Mr. Montori, you could bring us back some numbers?
Sure.
So we can see how this is working out.
Good.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, I think everybody's covered everything, but I just want to give a shout out to our graduates who will be graduating Tuxbury High School this Friday, and I want to commend them for their efforts and wish them the best of luck. That's all I have. Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We have a motion to adjourn made by Mr. Mackey, second by Mr. Ryder. Ms. Wellman, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Krabman, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Mackey, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Ryder, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye as well. We are now adjourned, our next meeting is on June 25th. Thank you and good evening.
Thank you.